Might make tonight maybe easier if he doesn't show.
Right.
Here comes some people, Pete.
Oh.
Those are your people? Excellent.
Welcome.
Are we ready then?
You know that's.
We're good, Shelby? We're good? One minute. Okay. Good? Okay. Good evening. So I'll call to order the September 11th, 2025 meeting of the City of Kalamazoo Zoning Board of Appeals. We are a volunteer advisory board appointed by the City Commission. Would the staff please conduct the roll call?
Sylvester?
Here.
Work?
Here.
Holder?
Here.
Harrington?
Here.
Han?
Here.
And Urban?
Here.
Excellent. Any, we've all got the agenda. Any changes or additions to that?
No.
Thank you. So, let's talk about the minutes. I assume everybody's had the minutes. Any corrections that need to be made to the minutes? No? Anybody want to make a motion to approve it then?
I move approval of the minutes as submitted.
Somebody say they second it?
I'll second.
Excellent. Any discussion needed? No? Then we will move to the vote on that. All those in favor of approving last meeting's minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Those are approved. Fantastic. Alright, so here's the procedures for the meeting tonight. For each applicant, the secretary will read the request into the record. The applicant or representative will have up to 10 minutes to present whatever information they would like to present on that. As always, begin by stating your name and your address at the podium. Don't be surprised if you get asked to repeat it like three times so that it gets correctly spelled in the minutes. After that, public comment will follow. The speakers will come up to the podium as well, state their name and address. They will be limited to three minutes though. Those in favor get to speak first, those opposed second. And I'll say on those times, three minutes and 10 minutes is not a whole lot, so you might want to get to your point and save a whole ton of introductions. Just some advice. Anyway, call-in comments will then be played. Callers may dial 888-382-9556 during the designated period. It says call-in, my notes say call-in comments will be played. They won't be played. You'll be speaking live. There will be no recording. Following all of this, the public hearing will close and the board will move on to the finding of fact where we will state the finding of fact and take a vote on that. The vote on the finding of fact is not a decision on the request itself, so the first vote you hear is not going to be on approving or disapproving, rejecting the request. The board will then deliberate, ask follow-up questions of all the prior speakers, of staff, of the attorney, of one another. So we'll discuss it. For at that point, then we will take a roll call vote on whether to approve or deny the request. Full board at this time is still six members until the zoning commission, I think it is, takes some extra action. So you need to get four of us to vote in favor of the request in order for it to be approved. I think I covered it. Alright, so would the secretary, would you read the first request into the record?
Absolutely. Okay. Alright. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the zoning board of appeals by the Edison Community Partners, CBA number 25-08-14 at 1900 Belford Street. The applicant is requesting a dimensional variance from Appendix A, Chapter 4, Section 4.2 QB6, to authorize a variance to permit 0% of the exterior materials on two of the buildings in the proposed development to be composed of brick, decorative precast, or a decorative masonry surface, concrete siding, or other natural materials such as wood, where at least 50% is required. For the third residential building, a total of 3 and 4 tenths, 3.4%, of the building's exterior materials are composed of brick decorative precast or decorative masonry surface, concrete siding, or other natural materials such as wood, where at least 50% is required. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So would the applicant or the representative come forward, sign in, state your name, address, and go ahead and tell us whatever it is you would like us to know?
... And my address, I live in Kalamazoo, 2109 Benjamin Street. Work address, Edison Community Partners, 1105 Belford Street. I'm a senior developer of Edison Community Partners on the Calm Recovery Project. The Calm Recovery Project is modeled after a project called Andy's Place in Jackson. Again, my name is Matt Hollander, 2109 Benjamin Street, for the record. This is Andy's Place in Jackson. This is the Michigan State Housing Development Authority's pilot recovery housing project, which opened in 2020, 2021. And I'm only including these images because I want people to understand what this project will look like in general, because this is the pilot that was already built. This is a national award-winning project that we are emulating and we're working with many of the same players who built this project. What is recovery housing? This is safe and decent affordable housing. This is long-term housing with MISHDA project-based vouchers for supportive services-equipped residents who are in recovery from substance use disorders. It is a partnership between affordable housing developers and drug treatment courts. In the case of the Kalamazoo project, we're partnering with the Ninth Circuit and the Eighth District Drug Treatment Courts, and we're also partnering with Integrated Services of Kalamazoo to deliver long-term supportive services. So this is not transitional housing or low-quality. This is MISHDA-financed affordable housing that people can live in long-term, who are transitioning out of homelessness and sober and in recovery from substance use disorders. The site is part of 333 East Alcott, which is the former Performance Paper Mill site. The address will be 1900 Belford, once the project is constructed. As you can see, this sits at a transitional area in the Edison neighborhood where a single-family neighborhood transitions into a collaborative health campus across the Portage Creek. There's Kalamazoo County Health and Community Services Building. There's an MDHHS facility next door to the south, Family Health Center, which is a federally qualified health center, and Integrated Services of Kalamazoo is right adjacent. So this site makes a lot of sense for us because the services that our residents will need are in close proximity. They're also in close proximity, walking distance of a full-service grocery store, schools, parks, and other daily needs. The surrounding neighborhood consists of single-family homes, which are primarily clad in vinyl and aluminum siding. That is the dominant facade material of the adjacent single-family homes. These are four representative photographs of homes that are immediately adjacent of the site. As you can see, these are, you know, simple vinyl-clad homes. I think every photo in this set is vinyl or aluminum. Neighboring commercial buildings are shown in these images. So we have 400 Bryant Street, which is the county health building, historic brick building that was redeveloped by Plaza Corp. in 2018, Integrated Services, also a brick-clad building at the corner of Alcott and Portage Street. And then down at the bottom, we have the relatively new MDHHS building. I think it's a 50,000 square foot, Michigan, State of Michigan building, which is on the lower left in the image, and then the Family Health Center to the right. So our site plan, which is now oriented sideways, because it's easier to see on a screen, north is to your right, south is to your left. To the south, or to the bottom of this image, which is east, is the single-family neighborhood, and then you have the Portage Creek on the west, and on the other side of that is the Community Health Building. On the other side of Bryant Street to the south are the other commercial structures, and then Reed Street is the boundary on the north, which has more single-family homes on the other side of that. I have the request in here. I'm just going to skip past that because there's a slight difference between what I had written here and what the staff report includes. So the staff report is what we're asking for tonight. That is the request. This is a rendering from Aben Marsh Vice, the architecture and engineering firm working on the project. In the background here, we have Building A, which is a 36-unit apartment building, elevator service. In the foreground and off to the left are Buildings B and C. Those are two-story walk-up buildings. The primary building is almost entirely one-bedroom units for people in recovery in supportive services. The smaller buildings are for families, so we have two- and three-bedroom units there. There are two two-bedroom units in the big building for onsite staff. When this is constructed, this will be the first new construction, permanent supportive housing project of this scale in Kalamazoo in a long time. Kalamazoo Commons was another recent permanent supportive housing project. We've had hardly any permanent supportive housing built in Kalamazoo in a long time, and part of the reason for that is the cost. And so here's another rendering of the large building, Building A. As you can see, these are, these are nice buildings. I feel very strongly that we've come up with a nice facade, a nice element that is going to blend well into the neighborhood, and to the extent that we even designed these smaller buildings to the right in the image that you're looking at here, Buildings B and C, so that from the side, they look like two-story, single-family homes. So we've taken great care to create a transition between the single-family homes in the neighborhood into the larger commercial uses surrounding the project site. So this fits right into the city's housing priorities. Affordable housing is a major priority in Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, the county's housing plan. There is significant federal and local investment in the project. The City of Kalamazoo has already committed to ARPA funds to fund this project. We're working with the city to secure additional funding from Home and Foundation for Excellence right now. We've had tremendous support from City Commission in the form of a payment in lieu of taxes. The process of developing this project has been supported by the city all along because this is critical supportive housing. It's the toughest type of affordable housing to build and sustain long-term. I've been working on this project since July of 2018, if that gives you any idea of how many hours we have into making this happen. And this is a nonprofit partnership between a local developer, we're a Kalamazoo-based developer, and the courts through the county, and also the Community Mental Health Agency. So we've had all kinds of financial issues with this project. We've had a drop in tax credit equity rates, which has cost us nearly $700,000. We've had $700,000 or more of unforeseen environmental costs because this is a facility, this is a formerly contaminated site, which used to be on the federal super fund registry and has been a targeted cleanup site by the City of Kalamazoo for decades now. We have $26 million worth of state funding in play on this project that we'll lose if we don't get it done. We lost $4 million in federal funding back in March and had to claw our way out of that. We have had to come up with nearly $4 million of additional funding to provide supportive services after the recent cuts to Medicaid, to ensure that long-term, we're going to be able to provide all of the services and supports that these residents are going to need. We've had construction cost inflation of over $3 million since we started the project, and we still are working our way through a $3 million-plus funding gap to make sure that we have at least 10 to 15 years' worth of supportive services funding on this project when we close and build the project. And these requirements would add nearly $200,000 if we met the 50% requirement, which is in the zoning code. My estimation is that would be almost $200,000 of additional costs to the project when we factor in the additional soft costs. The hard costs, we are estimating right now at around $140,000 just in facade materials, if we were to do the 50%. These are some reference images of other affordable housing projects that have been recently built in the city. None of these are RM, so I'm not trying to pull a fast one here. These are all zoning designations that allow to not have 50% masonry facade materials, but all four of these projects, River's Edge, which is under construction, 530 Rose, which was recently completed, Zone 32. And these materials, if we use them on the facade, they would not provide any additional community benefit, in my opinion. I just showed you images of what I consider to be a very nice-looking complex. We've been sensitive to the architectural vernacular of the neighborhood surrounding the project. If we have to spend more money on facade materials, we will be directly robbing from the funding that we have for supportive services. And this is, this is a situation where, for this project to be successful, the biggest threat to this project and its success, and being a benefit to the neighborhood instead of an eyesore and a problem, is that we can manage it effectively and provide supportive services for the people who live there. And so we respectfully would love to move forward. The way that we've designed the project, which we believe is cost-effective, extremely high-quality, this is a well-designed complex. It's a 50-year building. All three of these are 50-year-plus buildings, and we have support. We have support of the neighborhood, we have support of the city, we have support of the county, we have support of the state. So that's, that's, that's what I have to say today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Pete, does the staff have any comments on the request?
I do have a few comments to make, and a lot of them fall in line with what Mr. Hollander mentioned. First of all, there's a demand, as we all know, for more housing, especially, you know, unique housing like this for substance abuse treatment. We also know that the cost of materials and labor continues to go up, and there's a lot of funding cuts, which another example of, you know, the changes at the federal level and funds that are no longer there. But what I wanted to focus on is this standard, which Mr. Hollander commented on about the 50% natural materials requirement for the facade of these multifamily buildings. You know, in the staff report, we indicated, you know, that there is inconsistency in how this standard is applied to other projects, especially mixed-use projects don't have to comply at all with this standard. It's just for residential multifamily. So, you know, so there's that. There's the added burden it puts on the developer. So the planning staff is looking to amend the ordinance and remove this language as far as the natural materials standards. So when we look at, you know, the special circumstances involved here, you know, that, that should weigh heavily on it, that, you know, this is a, you know, an ordinance language item that, you know, is slated to be removed and shouldn't be, you know, the developer shouldn't be punished because it's still in the ordinance. It hasn't, we haven't gotten it amended yet. But other things I wanted to mention, obviously, this site has been challenged with having three street frontages, which made for a very interesting, a lot of very interesting site plan review meetings. But this site will, you know, be fully compliant with all the other site requirements of the site plan review process, from stormwater runoff to landscaping, you know, to bike parking. It's all there, and this has all been worked through methodically by the developer. And lastly, as the developer mentioned, the consistency with what is, with the structures that are around the site, you know, that, you know, it is a single-family adjacent to this property, and, you know, the type of materials used in the neighborhood are similar to what is being proposed for these buildings, along with the accents, like the support posts for the overhangs. There are some natural materials that will be incorporated in. And in addition to that, I just want to mention, you know, as far as architectural features, which is another requirement for multifamily structures, that they have at least three architectural features. Well, these buildings have much more than that as far as the undulation of the roofline, the varying facade fronts, the overhangs for the entryways, the area for hanging of murals. You know, it really is, you know, nicely, nicely done. And so we're really just talking about, you know, the, you know, the type of materials being used for the, for the building facade here. So staff is supportive of the request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So to the public, I will now open the floor to those who wish to come up and have their three minutes to speak in favor of the proposal, should anybody care to do so. Excellent. Anybody wish to speak against it? Hearing none, or seeing none? Thank you. Call-in comments is what Pete is looking for right now.
Okay, we're checking for call-in comments. The line is open. And we have no call-ins for this variance request tonight.
Excellent. I'll also note that there was an email received from a nearby property owner in support of the request. Okay. So seeing no other comments, I'm going to close the public hearing portion. I know this question, the answer to this question already. Does the board need, do we need any additional discussion before the finding of fact? For me, the answer is yes. So I'll just turn my questions to Pete, and then anybody can pile. Pile on is the wrong way to say it, but if anybody had any questions for him, he can also answer those. So how sure or how far out are we of the zoning change?
That is a good question. We're having those discussions right now because there are some other ordinance amendments that we would also like to get done in the near future. So I don't, I don't know to answer that question, but it is, it is being discussed.
It's not like a couple of years ago where we were just preemptively approving things because it was, it was certain to happen. This is more in the earlier stages.
Yeah, yeah. This is in the early stages, but these are standards that, you know, first they were flagged because of the inconsistency with the type of projects. And, you know, then, you know, then looking at the, what it was doing to construction costs, inflating the construction costs of some projects, you know, and not impacting others, that's, that was really the turning point, you know. And the vinyl materials have improved as far as the quality of what you can get in vinyl. So that is, you know, and aluminum. So it's, you know, I just can't give a, I can't give a timeframe just yet on that.
So is it, sorry, Jack, I keep stepping over you. So if they were to put a commercial, like just, I don't know, coffee shop in the bottom floor of one of these buildings, this discussion doesn't happen because they can just do whatever with the materials? Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
And I think at the last meeting, when this was going to be up, but it wasn't, we kind of talked about, you know, a couple of buildings near here where, and I think he showed them, where they don't match any of this, but they also have like a coffee shop in the bottom. I mean, the one is all commercial all the way around. If they were to do that, which I'm not suggesting, then we just don't have to have this discussion?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's not required, though, is it?
It just changes what is required of the builder, what the building owner has to meet. Like if it's a residential, strictly residential, they have to do this kind of stuff, right? But if you put a business in the bottom, it's kind of out the window.
Correct. And this is the same section of regulations that also has the facade length maximum that that Bronco Commons project ran into on West Michigan Avenue.
Okay.
So, you know, why are we limiting how long a building should be? You know, that's, you know.
Oh, yeah, we did talk about that.
Developments come in all different shapes and sizes.
I guess it was similar to, sorry, Shelby, I'm talking over Pete. My apologies. No, I mean, the one up by the highway too, the hotel to housing, that also, I think we had a similar, it wasn't facade-based, but I think it was one of those where they, the zoning would say, you got to put a business in there, and we're like, that doesn't make any sense here.
True, true. That was a different zone district, but yeah, they, that was another use variance-type situation.
But it kind of analog, yeah.
And that does happen, and it can affect the feasibility of a project. When you create commercial space strictly to avoid the need for variance, you then mess up the actual feasibility of the project.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that happen. I'm like, this is, it's a, and I think you've pointed that out too, which is, it's a strange thing that you wouldn't require something over here, but if you put like the tiniest little business in there, you can do whatever. Anyway, sorry, Jack, I kept interrupting you.
I have a question. Well, I know you can't give a definite date about when the zoning ordinance could be amended, but is there any, can you safely say that this, when, I'd still like to have some clue about whether it's just your intention to have the zoning ordinance updated in this regard about, or is it in somebody's plan to do some, in some year, if not this year, next year, a year after? Because that would be helpful to know.
So what I can share is that the city planner, Christina Anderson, you know, has looked at this segment of additional requirements that apply only to multifamily developments, and has said, you know, these are all, you know, what we're, these are all going to be removed, you know, because of the, you know, burdensome nature of them, and because of the inconsistency and how they apply to development projects. So it is on her docket to, you know, to remove this, you know, and I don't know what else is planned for the, you know, related to the, you know, the residential development regulations, but this one has, you know, this is not the first time this has come up. That's why I wanted to mention that Bronco Commons project. So that's the other thing that kind of triggers like, you know, like these ordinance provisions, you know, where they may have served the community, you know, a decade ago, you know, they are not performing their duty anymore. And we've had more than one request before the board that clearly the project needed variances granted from these same provisions to allow the project to go forward. And so it's, yeah, so this one is pretty clear that, you know, we know what we need to do. I just, I just don't know what the execution date is for making those amendments. And I know that was a very roundabout answer.
Well, I appreciate it, but it didn't really answer. Okay.
It was, it was, it was a, I don't know. Well, as he was talking, I was wondering, if the city just gave them the money or threw in some funding, why didn't they just while they were at it, change the zoning of this one little plot? one little plot to take all of this away?
I'd be spot reselling.
That, that, I don't know that that's a good, good way to do it though, is to.
They'd be doing that kind of stuff anyway, but I mean.
All right. So I think, does anybody else have anything they need to ask as far as the finding of fact? We still have discussion on do approve or not? Probably not. So I guess it's Gary, you're doing the, the motion for the finding of fact, yeah?
Yes.
Excellent.
I move the finding of fact for 1900 Belford Street shall include all information in the notice of public hearing dated August 27th, 2025 in the agenda packet staff provided for this request, as well as the presentation by Mr. Hollander and staff comments. Eighty-seven notices of public hearing were sent and one, there was one response received. Matt Robbins, owner of 503 and 511 Boulevard, is in support of the project. There was no one on site that spoke in favor or against, and there were no call-ins for this project. Mr. Hollander, the senior partner, explained the project in detail. He first showed us a similar project, which was Andy's Place. It's a housing project in Jackson and it's an award-winning project. He also explained that this project is a recovery housing program and it's financed by MISTDA and, uh, explained the, explained the site in detail, that the services of DHS and the Family Health Center and food stores in the area would be a big help to this, this project. There will be three buildings, one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedrooms. City of Kalamazoo supports the affordable housing project and Matt told us that he had been working on this project, on this project since July 2018. And since then, a lot of the financing has been changed. Of course, costs have risen substantially and they, they found it very difficult to put this project together. And the savings will go a long way toward managing the project and sports services. That's the finding of fact.
Thank you. Anybody wish to second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Second by Jack Urban. I don't think we need any discussion on the finding of fact at this point, although unless he left something out? Nope. All those in favor then of adopting the finding of fact, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? None. All right. Now, do we have the motion on the, the request itself?
I move to approve the variance request.
Thank you. Second?
I second that.
Alan, seconds. All right. So now we can discuss, does anybody have a, have a burning desire to talk on it?
I do have something to say about it.
Go for it.
I know this property because we saw this property at Natural Features Review Board a few years ago. As Mr. Hollander said, this property's been in development for several years now. And, and Pete, this has the good fortune also of being in a natural features overlay as one of the other challenges it's had because of the watershed that flows down Portage Creek.
Well, we just approved a request for drainage on the other side of the creek.
That's right. That's right. And this project was really carefully described to the NFP Review Board. And that's a, a board, as you know, that is really stringent on natural resources management. And the developer did an excellent job of meeting all of those requirements, but did also a good job of explaining this project at that time. This project, like many of its kind, does have challenges because of the financing of it and the extremely high cost of this permanent supportive housing, which is much talked about in our country. But if you, if you caught the math on this, this is over $500,000 a unit to develop this because PSH housing is so expensive, MISTDA's requirements are so high, reserves have to be so, so full for these kinds of projects. And it gives you a sense of how dire the housing shortage is for people who need these supportive housing services. And I know a little bit about that because we manage a project that includes PSH units and it, and it, these are really hard projects to finance, to get off the ground, and then they're hard projects then to sustain. So this, to me, strikes me as an excellent project and but for this need for this dimensional variance, it looks like it's going to be a really excellent project for that location. So I'm very much in favor of granting this dimensional variance, needed only for, because of its lack of a coffee shop in, in a room closet.
Yeah.
In the first floor.
Yeah.
With barrier-free restrooms and ramps and, and other features.
Um, thank you, Alan.
Yes.
For me, the, the, it was the, the slide talking about the cost, I think, of some environmental remediation because the site is contaminated and how if they didn't have to do that, they could meet the, the facade requirements fairly easily. I would say, for me, the overwhelming special circumstances is the contamination of the site and the challenges it poses. Normally, I'm, I'm the, I'm the one most likely to say no to requests. That might not be true, but it feels true. But in this case, I think that though, that's enough of a special circumstance to, to, I know Charlie hates it when I say look the other way, but essentially look the other way on the, on, on not conforming with the zoning. So this would be perfect for granting the variance. Anybody?
I love this project. I think it's wonderful. I'm happy that the city has been so supportive. These are the type of things, if y'all want to do something, this is the kind of stuff we should, yes, look the other way on. I think it's very thoughtful and I thank you for doing this. I think it's really good. I'll be approving and my vote will be to approve it.
Yep.
Anybody else? Nobody has to? Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was, recall when Mr. Hollander first came to the city commission to present this idea probably five years ago or more. And it was a highly, uh, um, we were highly pleased with it, but at that, at that time, there were some neighbors who needed to be convinced. And the fact that Mr. Hollander has been, and his staff and the people working with him have been so patient and so steadfast in staying with the effort to get this project funded and accepted by the neighborhood is something to be commended. And I just want to be on the record saying to, to you and your staff, thank you very much. And to the community as a whole, this is what happens when persistence is shown to, to be paying off.
They're good. They're good.
Excellent. Thank you. Pete, take the vote. Please.
We'll start with Sylvester.
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Harrington?
She said yes.
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Thank you. Who's that? Six nothing, six zero?
And thank you all for speaking into your mics. I know if you're not quite close enough, sometimes it doesn't pick up.
Thank you.
But please try to, you know, be mindful of that because this, because if, if the mic's not picking you up, then the viewing audience won't be able to hear what you're saying.
Yep. So that request is approved. Congratulations.
All right. Affordable housing.
Go ahead.
Okay.
All right. Let's move on to the next agenda item. If you want to read that one into the record.
I can do it. Alrighty. An application for, that was not Lady Light, but, okay. An application for variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals by Ronald Flowers of Flowers Automotive Recycling. The applicant is requesting a dimension, I'm sorry, the applicant, I'm sorry, ZBA number 25-09-15 at 1008 East Crosstown Parkway, 1008 East Crosstown Parkway, Parkway Rear, 1016 East Parkway, Crosstown Parkway, 1007 Fourth Street and 1011 Fourth Street. Those are all three of the parcels or the properties that are going to be addressed tonight? Is that right? Am I saying that correctly?
I think so.
Okay. Alrighty.
Yes, when I looked at it, I was like Crosstown Rear, but.
I'm saying it correctly?
I think so.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay. A use variance request from Appendix A 4.1, a use variance to operate a business that qualifies as a scrap and salvage operation within the M1 manufacturing, General Zone District, where this use is only permitted in the M2 Zone District. And number two, a dimensional variance from Appendix A Chapter 4.2 Y1, a dimensional variance for a scrap and salvage operation to be located on a combination of parcels totaling, there we go, 1.2 acres in area, where this type of use is required to have a minimum of two acres of land. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
Thank you. Excellent. Would the, would the applicant please step up, sign in, state your name and tell us whatever it is you'd like us to know about the request? Oh, I gotta turn on, I had the control of that microphone over here, by the way.
Okay.
My name is Ronald Flowers of 241 Avenue A in Springfield, Michigan, and I am the owner of Flowers Automotive Recyclers. And I am here today to present a, a reclassification for the Board of Appeals when it comes to Flowers Automotive. And just to give you some history, the Flowers Automotive Recyclers, we started buying end-of-life vehicles probably about five years ago here in Kalamazoo. And we were located at 1110 Fullford Street off of Lake Street in Kalamazoo. And I want to say, in the beginning, it was scrap vehicle. You know, it was a junk car. You know, and we looked at it as, you know, we can take a car and just remove some things off of it. And I, I want to say that I inspired to be a baby KMR, a Kalamazoo metal recycler, to have this big old yard and maybe an auto parts yard. But due to circumstances, that journey, things kind of changed for us. One thing that caused the change was the, the pricing of the material and the price over the scale when we were taking vehicles to Kalamazoo Metal Recycler. The price went significantly down. It dropped and went really, really low. And one thing that happened at that time was we were faced with, are we going to shut down or are we going to find a way to stay in business and take this to something different? And at that time, we decided to do research and what we did was, we basically went online and we found businesses, businesses throughout the country as well as the world that were interested in purchasing these components from these, from the vehicles. So we went from looking at a vehicle from scrap and as junk to looking at a vehicle as recycling, automotive recycling. And through the research and development, we found out that there is no automotive recycling industry in this country, which is pretty interesting considering the volume of vehicles and how at this time, they're not being properly recycled. So through that process, we, we came to understand that now we're moving from looking at a vehicle as a scrap vehicle, now we're looking at a, something that was new and innovative. And the, and what we found out was that basically we are in a position to eliminate waste from a vehicle to where the vehicle would have zero waste. And in our process, we learned that there are, basically, we were able to create a very, I would say dysfunctional or kind of rough disassembly line, a system over at the Fullford location, which was outside, there was no facility, and I would say it was too much space. We don't need much space now at this time. So now, after understanding and, and learning everything that we learnt over at the Fullford site, now we, we moved to Crosstown Parkway. We're at Crosstown now, which is a facility that at this time is built and is suited for use. When you think of the traditional scrap yard or a salvage yard, you would, I can see how you would need the two acres of land and how potentially you would have vehicles stored on top of each other, and then you would just have a plot of land and there would just be vehicles everywhere. The thing is, due to what we've learned over the past few years, is that we have scaled to a size to where we don't need to be a big yard. Our vehicles come now into the Crosstown facility and they are actually, there is a vehicle lifecycle and the vehicles are basically in a assembly line and they go through a process and then within seven days, the complete entire vehicle is gone. The parts and components that are removed from those vehicles are stored onsite in a shed that has galors and so there's, there's no visibility of any components or parts of any type of dismantling that will be seen from public view or street view. So, and the thing is now that we're, since we, we found, there is so much support from organizations throughout the state of Michigan, naming one is Eagle. Working with Ann Giltriss from Eagle, who came and we did a site walkthrough and basically explained what we were looking to do and she, she thought it was amazing. And she's on board in partnership when it comes to regulation and compliance and when it comes to fluid containment. We're working with Eagle as well as we filled out a next grant, a next cycle grant through Eagle, that they are looking to purchase fluid containment equipment onsite for us. And so they're going to come in and they're going to be the ones to guide and support and tell us how to set up the fluid containment over there. And then, one thing is to be mindful is that the property, there's only one side of the property that will be used for the disassembly and the storage of the vehicles, which is the west side of the property. And come to find out that the property is sitting on 16 inches of concrete. I want to say the property was formerly Standard Oil and a concrete company back here in the past. And also, when we look at the size, because I'm, I know that the size and the capacity is something that's really important and something that needs, that, that, that needs to be recognized so that it doesn't become maybe something a little bit out of control. The size of the property, we, we don't need more space. We don't need to add more space to store more vehicles. We don't need to become that. We've scaled the property on the side and we're working with the Michigan Manufacturing Technology Center with Mark Gettle, who was on site yesterday. And we're working to come with a, a small scalable disassembly automotive, reverse manufacturing line that is small, is scalable, and is, and is basically, I would say we're pioneering on the forefront of a sleeping industry in the country when it comes to automotive recycling. And the partnerships that we have with, even with Northern Initiatives who support small businesses in growth and creating jobs. One thing to note about Flowers Automotive and over on the Crosstown side is the, the impact that it would make on the community as well as the economic impact. Flowers Automotive is looking to be able to hire 15 and 20 employees over in the, in that area. And that alone is something that's extremely impactful when we look at coming up with something that is, number one, environmentally friendly, it is sustainable, and it's, it has an impact, a good impact on the community. And I want to say that along with the support with Northern Initiative, Next Cycle of Michigan and Eagle, the Michigan Manufacturing Technology Center, as well as now being partially approved for a, the Kalamazoo County Brownfield Authority, who's on board as a core collaborator to assist in making sure the property is in compliance and in environmental, up-to-code standards for a safe and work environment. and in environmental, up-to-code standards for a safe and work environment for the employees. That partnership is in place and we are actively engaging in reviewing the ground and the site to make sure that there is no contamination within the ground on the property. So, I would like to say that the most important thing is being not in an area and doing something that's not supposed to be done in the area and something that could cause harm to the community in the area. Flowers Automotive Recyclers in the area and every single thing about Flowers Automotive Recyclers creates a positive impact for the community. I've thought about the pros and cons and how this could not work, how it could fail, and I don't see any. This is a collective team effort, which the city of Kalamazoo is involved with and supports, as well as other government entities. The Kalamazoo Chamber of Commerce, who's supporting us with building an employment special event for hiring. I think that's about it. You guys asked me some questions. Because I don't know fully every single thing when it comes to maybe how to present the case, but I do know that everything here is, it is a good thing. And it's good for the city. I want to know how we can do it and how we cannot do it.
Thank you. If we've got questions, we'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Pete, I assume staff's got comments on the request?
You assume correct.
Excellent.
Mr. Flowers, you did really nice on, you know, providing an overview and summary. You know, I have to say, from a staffing standpoint and from seeing the first generation of Flowers Automotive that was operating, Flowers Automotive Recycling, excuse me, that was operating at the Fullford location, I was skeptical. And so myself and other planning staff, and Shelby Donaldson even went out with us. We did a field trip. We went and visited this Crosstown location to see how this could really be laid out and how it really could be different from, you know, what we think of as a typical automotive recycling operation. And, you know, the site itself lends to this unique recycling venture that Mr. Flowers is embarking upon with the large, very large, commercial service bays in the building, which I think might have been when consumers' concrete, I think they used them for maintaining the trucks that actually carried the concrete. So they're very deep service bays. But, so essentially, this use variance evolves from the fact that the ordinance is very rigid on what falls into this scrap and salvage category. So it includes scrap and salvage operations, obviously, storage of inoperable vehicles, wrecking and towing services, and automotive recycling facilities. And so, you know, you think of like, you know, a towing impound yard, you think of a scrapping operation similar to Kalamazoo Metal Recyclers, for example, where there is a lot of acreage needed. You can see why the section of the ordinance requires these types of uses to have the two acres plus fencing around the premises where the outdoor storage is, so that there's no view of the automotive parts or inoperable vehicles. So, but with this layout, and I want to draw some attention to the conceptual plan that shows, you know, the two vehicle's, vehicle storage locations. You know, the footprint of where inoperable vehicles will be on the property is very minimal, as Mr. Flowers pointed out. So it, you know, it isn't, it's like a automotive salvage-type business slash recycling on a much smaller scale than what we've typically seen in other parts of the city. You know, where the cars kind of come there to, you know, come there to die and stay until they've been picked apart over the course of years or they're ground up into scrap and removed from the site eventually. But this, you know, really, looking at the review criteria and the special circumstances, I want to draw, first of all, attention to the size of the building and the extensive service bay doors on the west side, which is where the vehicles will, they'll be stored outside those service bay doors and then brought in to remove the select components. And in the staff report, we gave a rundown of the types of components that are removed and recycled. Some of them are even, they're able to be repurposed, resold, not just, you know, ground up and recycled because of the type of metal they're made out of. But some of the components of these quote junk autos, you know, actually still have valuable life and can be put in another car and, you know, have not truly reached their end of life, which is unique and more than I knew before. But anyway, so the building itself, the location is, yes, it's smaller than the two acres. But, you know, just focusing on the use variance for a minute, we have the the building, the type of business and how it doesn't really fit the wording of the ordinance as far as typical scrap and salvage operation really is. So it really is, you know, a light version. You know, is it, you know, consistent with the ordinance? You know, we feel that, you know, it is consistent with the lining, the land uses with the zone district. I mean, the property is still Zoned Manufacturing Limited, so it's M1. So this is not a commercial zone, this is a manufacturing zone. The applicant will not have outdoor, would not be doing outdoor disassembly. And the only parts of the car that will be outdoors at all will really be the tires for a limited period of time. But all the components, because of the value of them, they're not to be left out in the elements. So those will be stored inside the building. So it is different and it is not any more intensive than other uses in that area of the city, like Camps Palates, for example, on Mills Street, which is also in the M1 zone district. So, I think that wraps up staff's comments. We are supportive, I do want to draw attention to the conditions. So, you know, as we grappled for how to, you know, lend support for this, given the unique nature of the business, we also, at the same time, want to provide protections to the neighborhood. And so the first condition we came up with was, the disassembly or removal of the automotive components will occur within the building. And that is what Mr. Flowers has already stated for the board. The second one is that the outdoor storage of inoperable vehicles is limited to the two vehicle storage locations that are shown on the concept plan. So that, you know, we know that this site is not going to evolve into a, you know, inoperable vehicle or junk vehicle storage yard at a later date. So, those are the two conditions staff would like the board to consider if there is, you know, a movement to, you know, support this variance request. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open this up for public comment then. If anybody out there wishes to speak in favor of the request, come to the microphone and say so. Okay. Anybody wish to speak against it? Don't be shy. Don't be shy to speak in favor either. Alright, nobody wants to speak. Call-in comments?
I am checking to see if we have any call-in comments tonight for this case. And the line is open and we have no call-in comments.
Thank you. Then that will close the, that portion of this particular hearing. I do want to note for the record, we did get an email from a neighboring property.
Two.
Did we get two on this one?
Somebody at 511.
Oh, no, they're in, that was...
That was in favor.
For the other one.
Oh, was it?
No, there's just the one here who is generally...
Rushmore, okay.
I would say generally against it.
Yep.
Alright, so, seeing no further comments, do we need any additional discussion before the finding of fact? I know the answer is already yes, because I have questions for Pete as far as the finding of fact is concerned. So that I'm clear, I believe in this district, they are allowed to do other car services in this zone, is that correct?
Yes, auto repair.
Correct, correct. And there was a business called RC Auto that was in this building for a period of time.
Okay.
So, yeah, so you can do, you know, auto repair, you can have new and used car sales.
Which would likely have some amount of like, broken-down car storage, I would imagine, for car repair.
Correct.
And isn't this also like, this is light industrial manufacturing, right? M1?
Yeah, yeah. It's called M1, but it is looked at as a light manufacturing zone district.
And even though, like, taking out the M1 district portion of it and just focusing on the two acres, if I look at the map that you guys have here, you're actually suggesting that if this is 1.2 acres, that they actually should only use about two-thirds of it with some of this just straight up, maybe not empty, but unused for this purpose?
Yeah, yeah, there is a portion that is shown along, well, the frontage along Crosstown Parkway that I don't, that is not intended to be part of the main recycling, yeah. So that's just gonna be an access drive coming in.
So...
And I think, just to clarify, like, you know, we do need to vote on these applications separately. And I don't know if it makes sense for the board to just go through and talk about the use variance now and vote on that and then go back to the other dimensional variance?
Well, I think we should just do a general finding of fact for the whole thing and then we'll argue it out separately, which is sort of a unique position for the applicant. You could win on one and lose on the other and then, who knows where you are. But be that as it may, so when you guys, your office, went over there and looked at it, Shelby too, they at least were convincing enough that they don't need even the full 1.2 acres of land to do this operation?
That is true, that is true.
Now, what if, and maybe this is a question for later, but what if we put in these conditions and they're like, eh, let's just stick some cars over here? Where is the, where are we on that? Are we reliant on a neighbor, perhaps the one who doesn't really want it to be there to call in and say, store junk cars on this part? Or what's the enforcement end of it?
So, and that's a good question. So the next step for this project would be site plan review. So then there is going to be not just a concept plan showing where the vehicle storage is, it's gonna be identified on the approved site plan. And then, that will have to be followed. That will be, if there was a complaint, then yes, that would go to the zoning staff as an enforcement matter. And we could utilize not only the hearing tonight, but the approved site plan to say, look, you know, those vehicles need to be removed. So, yeah, there is a process and we would be able to easily address that if it happened.
Thank you, Jack, I see you got your hand up. Make sure your microphone's on, though.
Yes, I have a question, interpretation. It looks to me that a lot of the, the heart of the issue revolves around the fact that this operation has been classified as a scrap and salvage operation. Now, did that designation come from planning staff?
Yes, yes, we made the interpretation that this is the land use category that it falls in.
Now, could you explain for the board how you arrived at that designation?
Well, we arrived at that designation because this is a business that, A, handles inoperable vehicles. These vehicles would have to be towed or brought on a trailer to the site for this recycling process to take place. So inoperable vehicles are being brought to the site, inoperable vehicles are being disassembled on the site. And those all fall under that scrap and salvage definition. And then, of course, those components of the vehicle are being, you know, sold off.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
If, is it possible to also have it be qualified as a vehicle recycling, disassembly operation, somehow avoiding scrap and salvage part? Would that, it seems like it could be designated in a number of ways and some other ways I could think of it wouldn't fall into the M2 zoning district?
So let me, I want to follow up on that. So I understand your question before Pete answers it. If we call it a salvage and scrap, we are more making it like Kalamazoo Medical Recyclers, which is a vastly different operation and business. And so, if we do that, we're holding it to a different standard than maybe it should for what it actually is. Similarly, I don't, you couldn't call it like an auto repair shop and get a different way. It's somewhere stuck in between. I think that's what your question is getting at.
A disassembly factory.
Is that what, am I understanding correctly?
Yes, this is what I'm trying to get at.
Can you speak to that then?
Why can't it be a disassembly?
And I'm gonna answer that, but first I'm gonna say this, that the way to mentally frame this is, think of our category of retail sales and service businesses. And all the types of uses that fall into that category. Whether it's a flower shop, or a bar, or a restaurant, or a fitness center. So, in this case, the header is scrap and salvage operation. That is the all-encompassing category. And then within that, you have all these different uses. And to answer Mr. Urban's question, the last one listed is automotive recycling facilities. And it's impossible to, with that sort of specific language, on top of the fact that it talks about, you know, the handling and disassembly of inoperable vehicles, it's, you know, there's no way to say it doesn't belong in this overarching category. And so, yeah, so that is, yeah, that is the crux of why staff said, unfortunately, this is the category you fall in, it's only permitted in the M2 zone district. That means, you know, in order to get this approval process across the finish line, you know, a use variance is necessary. So that's how we got here.
Okay.
But that's good, yeah, I appreciate you asking the questions, though.
I think for, hold on, is this to...
I don't have nothing else.
Okay, I was gonna say, can we move to the finding of fact portion if somebody wants to make the motion on that? Or do you have a question on it? Sorry, go ahead.
I have a question for Mr. Flowers. How will your facility be different than Rose Auto Parts?
We don't focus on selling parts to the public. That's not something that we do. Maury Rose focused on selling parts to the public. I don't think they focus on selling parts to businesses. The foundation of Flowers Automotive Recyclers is to create a circular economy with the components of these, of the, of the parts that's coming from these vehicles to go back to manufacturers and rebuilders for reuse, repurpose and re-manufacturing. So we don't, we're not creating that, that, that path to where, uh, you can come, uh, someone who stays on Vine Street can't come to Flowers Automotive and say, hey, uh, I need to buy a fender. That's not something that we do. So our, our thing is, is rooted in recycling first. It's not rooted in, let's be a parts yard, you know, like Maury Rose is, let's focus on selling parts to the public or globally for that matter. We are rooted in recycling.
Yes.
And eliminating the waste of vehicles and at the same time creating jobs. Because there's a big waste of, we can just think of, of Kalamazoo Metal Recyclers and how they would drop a whole vehicle inside of the shredder. They're actually dropping, um, a really high amount of revenue at the same time. So we're, we're just creating a, a, a flow of recycling, not in, in business to business sales, not, uh, Maury Rose and that type of facility. Cause I think that Maury Rose, they have vehicles that are on site that have been there for six months a year.
Yeah.
Our vehicles sit on site for seven days and then they're gone.
Okay.
And, and, and that's based on, it, they have to go because it's the, it is the ideal of the business to, to have them circulating through, not sitting to try to sell a windshield or something. No, I'm not in, we're not interested in that. It's a 100% recycled and the parts and the vehicles, they are in a constant rotation. So they're not being stored inside and sitting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, first of all, you're a genius.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a second?
No.
All right, thank you.
Not for discussion.
All right, please, somebody make a.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I may add a little bit on the definitions. If we look at the definition of scrap and salvage operation, storage, sale, dismantling or other processing of used, source separated or waste material not intended for reuse in their original form. Typical uses include automotive wrecking yards, junk yards and salvage yards, but not recycling facilities. So we look at that, okay, well, he, not intended for reuse in their original form and recycling facilities, which Mr. Flowers has characterized it, uh, what he's doing, maybe that doesn't exactly fit in that. So let's look at, just a minute, I gotta pull up the recycling facilities. Look at a recycling facility. Licensed facility for the collection and or processing of recyclable materials primarily household and communal waste. Recycling facility does not include storage containers or processing actively located on the premises of residential, commercial or manufacturing use. And that is used solely for the recycling of material generated by that residential property, business or manufacturer. Recycling facility does not include scrap or salvage establishments and does not include the washing of equipment. And then it has, uh, large collection of facilities, small collection of facilities and processing centers. In my opinion, what Mr. Flowers is talking about doesn't really precisely fit in either one of those. And then it's dealing with automotive, as his staff has characterized it, is, is more falling within the salvage category. This is a, an issue that we've run into before and we run into from time to time. Definitions and of uses can. And certainly as, uh, over time, uh, new uses arise. There can be business innovations, such as what Mr. Flowers is, is thought to do, uh, that don't fit exactly. So just to kind of clarify where this fits, where it's been defined as one thing, but we're looking at a variance. But the fact that it doesn't precisely fit certainly could be.
An argument could be made that he doesn't need to ask permission.
Yeah.
But the staff has determined that it does require a variance, but you're saying, hey, it might not, it might not need it, so let that guide your vote, too.
Maybe it doesn't, but maybe it does. And when we're in that situation, the better course of action, I think, is to request a variance, but certainly the board can take that into consideration and, uh, even though it maybe doesn't fit precisely.
I think ultimately it will help me with my vote.
Say, well, this use really does, is consistent with the zoning ordinance and if we grant a variance, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Charlie. Jack's got a question.
Well, I have a.
Our comment.
A question for, uh, Mr. Flowers. It sounds, sounds to me like your operation is at, at, at an intermediate pa- point between the, uh, active use of the, of vehicles as they were intended and, and scrap. You're in the path between those. Uh, and most of, most of your, uh, valuable components, you're gonna get out of the car, out of the vehicle and give them, uh, a short path back to being reused. But not every, I can't imagine every part is gonna go back to a manufacturer or re-manufacture. I can see, for example, that fender that, uh, is maybe pretty well bent up and it's, it's on that car. It might have a very valuable catalytic convert, uh, converter on it that you wanna get off and a valuable alternator. Uh, but that fender that's bent up, I can see that going to, sent, going to, uh, a scrap yard down the street. Well, uh, you're sending your scrap to the scrap man. You're, you're, uh, just like a manufacturer makes scrap. You're a non-manufacturer who is also gonna make scrap, but you're not the scrapper. Is that, is that accurate?
It's, it's, it's accurate in, in the way that we see it, but the language.
Okay.
What we title it and how we identify with it is the change, is what we're seeing. And then the, the understanding that every part and component and piece of a vehicle does need to find its way to the proper material handler. So when you come to the fenders and the shell of a vehicle, it is steel, it is iron and it should go to KMR, uh, because that's where metal, they're a metal recycler. Now, just to say with Franklin Iron and Metal in Battle Creek, who's interested in purchasing the plastic from the vehicle, the bumpers, the dashboard, any other plastic components inside the vehicle, now that is the proper place for that material to go. You know, and it's just, and I just think when it comes to anything to deal with scrapping and anything going to Kalamazoo Metal Recycler, it's gonna look back, it's gonna look like this, it's gonna look like a mess, so to speak, you know, but in all actuality, the, the, the shell and the steel and that bent up fender, it does need to go to Kalamazoo Metal Recyclers so that it can be properly shredded and become maybe another door or fender in the future.
Well, um, I would, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I, uh, make a comment to the board? It seems to me we have a chance by how we word, uh, our decision on this to really provide some clarity to the, to the planning staff on, uh, how to handle situations that could arrive in the, can arise in the future. When there's trying to, we're trying to make distinctions like this, cause, uh, I think we could help ourselves if we had a better definition, a more, a clearer definition of what recycling, uh, can consist of, broader than it is now. And, uh, maybe we could avoid, it was, we ought to end up with something that helps the, the planning staff make a more, more appropriate decisions in the future rather than having us go through this again.
Excellent. Uh, somebody gonna make a motion on the finding of fact? I think that's Allison tonight on this one.
I move that the finding of facts for 1008, 10 rear, 1016 East Crosstown Parkway, 1007 and 1011 Fourth Street shall include all information included in the notice of public hearing dated August 27th, 2025 and the agenda packet staff provided for this request. Forty-six notices of public hearing were sent and one email from Ryan Racine of Rushmore Auto Body was received. Ronald Flowers, the owner of the business, stated that he started as a scrap yard on Fulford. And after he started his business, the pricing of scrap metal declined over time. He found new ways to manage, um, in the auto recycling process that was new and innovative and resulted in zero waste of vehicles. The rough outdoor disassembly process he did at his Fulford location and now that they're at Crosstown, it's unlike a traditional scrap yard, which we've since discussed a lot. And they've scaled to, um, they've scaled down so much that two acres is no longer needed. His parts and components are stored on site indoors and therefore not visible to the public. They have been working with Eagle and Brownfield Authority and other authorities to ascertain that they're remaining in compliance on all fronts and getting guidance and support for their processes and their fluid containment. And again, the disassembly is only happening, um, on the west side of the property. Disassembly and storage is only happening on one part of the property. The impact to the community is anticipated to be continuously positive. Currently, they're expecting to hire 15 to 20 employees and the environmentally sustainable impact is also positive for the community. Staff was admittedly skeptical of the plan at first because the ordinance is quite stringent for these types of uses. However, after seeing the plan, the, the staff is supportive on the conditions that they agreed to, um, very limited outdoor storage and disassembly inside. That is what I have.
Excellent. I support the finding of fact.
Excellent. Let's vote on the finding of fact then. All those in favor of adopting the specific finding of fact, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? No, the finding of fact is approved. Now, we've got to do these in two votes ultimately. One is on the, the variance request, uh, of whether to be able to do this type of business in this location. And I believe the staff's recommendations speak more directly to that particular request as far as storage and occurring, the disassembly occurring within the, the building. So whatever motion is made needs to include those for the first one, I think. The second one is purely about the size of the, the lot allowable for that. Would somebody make a requ- uh, a, a motion on the first request with the conditions if they wanna include them?
Well, sure. Um, I move that we approve the use variance as proposed with the recommendations made by planning staff having to do with the disassembly and removal of automotive components that this will occur within the building and that outside storage of inoperable vehicles is limited to two vehicle storage locations as shown on their concept plan.
I support.
Excellent. So let's discuss the use of variance then. I've been a little back and forth on, on that particular portion of it myself because I was, I was trying to find a way around it, sort of what Charlie was getting at with the, it could be this, could be that. You know, the definitions matter. And then Pete gave another, or before that, Pete talked about something else where he, I don't remember where I wrote it down, where he said the zoning or whatever is specific to this kind of a business in some way, in which case I was like, you're talking yourself out of your own recommendation. But at the very beginning, I thought this sort of seemed like an edge case to me, too, that could be one, could be the other, could be neither. And I'm inclined to say that it probably is, especially since the M1 districts allow some automotive services because of that and because it is sort of a weird in-between, that I'm inclined to support the variance request with the specific, um, uh, staff recommendations on it because I hope they will keep them closer to being more in line with what the ordinance has for car services or auto services and not letting it slide over into KMR territory. So that's why I'm gonna vote yes on that particular request. Does anybody wanna argue anything else on that?
I wanna get clarity on, I don't wanna argue without that. I wanna get clarity on what the staff recommendations are.
Well, it, it really is the conditions, the two conditions. I think of the recommendation, the, the term recommendation is being used, but it's really the, the two conditions that, uh, Mr. Sylvester pointed out.
Can you repeat them, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
The first was that the, uh, the, the automotive, um, disassembly occur inside the building. And then the second one is that the storage of inoperable vehicles is limited to just the two places identified on the plan.
Okay. Do you? Go ahead.
No, I was just, so that they would be stored here and all the work would be done in this area.
Do they have to have, like, Ryan asked in his letter to put a fence up?
So, 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 yeah, that will be part of the site plan review because it, it does fall under this category of scrap and salvage. The, uh, a screening fence is required around that, uh, area of the property where vehicles are stored, where automotive parts are stored or placed. So yes, yeah, that, that will be, that will be addressed. So it's more, it's more complete than just, you know, like if there was a, there are residences nearby and we have screening provisions from residential uses, but this means that that whole area of the facility has to be fenced off, so it's not visible from the street or an adjacent property.
Another final question for me right now is, is there any, like, what? I don't know the word I wanna use, credence? What, like, what does it mean? What value does it have to city staff that their process is only seven days? So from the point that the vehicle comes on site, it's only seven days versus a salvage yard, which could be there since 1967. I mean, like, it's just different. You know, there's, it's seven days is their turnaround time. What are your thoughts on that?
So, yeah, so the, it's, actually, that's a good, that's a very good question because the, the significance of that is, is that because there's only two areas where inoperable vehicles can be stored on the property, they, that will force the removal of the vehicles that have been, you know, that the recyclable components have been removed from so that they can bring, you know, new inoperable vehicles in to begin the recycling process with. So, so it's, you know, it's, it, it makes the, you know, it makes the, the cycle work.
Right. So, so even with that being what their process is, you still were inclined to, like, designate this as a scrap yard or a salvage yard?
Uh, only because the type of work being done falls under that broad category. And that's why I was using that retail. And that's why I was using that retail sales and service as an example, because the ordinance has these broad land use categories that a lot of, we call them similar uses fall under, but, you know, that's, that's how, that's how that interpretation came to be.
I would imagine staff's got to be a little more restrictive on what they can call things, or they should be in general, and leave the variances to this board, because if they start being really broad with them, you may, if you're broad with this one, but not with that one, then Charlie's in court having to defend that somewhere, and nobody wants that. So it's easier, I think, for them to be very narrow, or whatever, or, you know, broad on what they consider something, and let us make the final decision.
That makes sense.
Not that I get the sense, by the way, that, when you said that, that the, that they're not going to have the cars piling up there, the shell of that car is money. Pete probably don't want it sitting there any longer than it needs to.
That's right.
Like, get it on the trailer and get it out of here.
Well, I think that this is ushering in a new, like, space, like a phase in, like, the world. Like, I think that this is a part of just regenerative, it's just regenerative development. Like, it's like, this is reutilization of, like, materials, and this is, that's what, like, to your point, Commissioner Urban, like, this is what you're, like, we can offer that as a part of a conversation, a bigger conversation for the planning staff, that this is just a shift in, do you guys get what I'm trying to say? Like, it's a shift in what's happening in the world. We don't even know what to call this, but you're deconstructing, like, old material, old stuff.
Well, the zoning, the zoning speaks to a situation that existed up to the moment they voted on the zoning.
Yeah.
And while you can be somewhat forward-looking, there are things, and I know you want to say something, Charlie, I saw your thumb on the, but it can't speak too futuristically, because it just doesn't know. And I think that's what you're trying to get at, is like, this is a change that might not have been foreseen.
Yeah.
I did see you maybe had your thumb on your microphone. Did you want to add anything?
No, I was thinking about adding something, but I don't think that's going to add anything at this time, so I'm not going to add that.
Terrific.
I have something for Mr. Urban.
Go for it.
Mr. Urban, did, did we cover the concerns that you had in helping staff? Okay.
Excellent. Does anybody need to speak in favor or against this request from the board, or can we just roll call vote that?
Yeah.
Take the vote, Pete.
Okay, and this, just to clarify, the first vote is the vote for the use variance with the.
Conditions.
With the two staff-proposed conditions included.
Yep.
And we're going to start with Mr. Wark. Harrington?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Holer?
Be a funny heel turn if I said no, but no, I'm a yes. It wouldn't do any good, but. So that carries six, nothing on the first request. That means you can theoretically do it here, but the second request, which we're going to need a motion on, is whether we'll let you do it on that smaller piece of property. So somebody, please, make that motion.
I move to approve the dimensional variance request.
Thank you. Second, anyone?
Second.
There you go. I think Jack beat you to it, Alan. So let's discuss that. I think with the conditions involved and hearing from staff, I'm satisfied that the two, it's two acre rule need not apply here, because this is not, and this maybe ties back to the, this isn't necessarily that kind of business, is if you can do it on a much smaller space, it maybe isn't a salvage or scrapyard. But anyway, hearing from staff and them that they can do it, and it's preferable to do it in the small of an area, I'm inclined to vote to approve, to allow it as well.
Yeah, I agree with what you just said.
Yep.
Excellent. Doesn't seem like we need anything but a vote. Take the vote, Pete.
And we'll start with Ms. Harrington.
Sure. Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Holer?
Yes. That carries as well. Both of the requests are approved. Congratulations. Good luck with site plan review.
Yay!
Yes. I don't think we have any other business on the agenda for tonight, for the first time in months.
The only thing I want to mention is the bylaws that were approved at the last meeting. One element of those does have to go to the city commission, and that is the number of regular board members. Does have to, we do have to do an ordinance amendment on that. So I will keep the board posted on when we get that moved forward in the interim period. Mr. Sylvester will remain alternate number one, and Mr. Urban will be alternate number two.
So I have to retract the welcome to the board I offered to Alan the last time.
Yeah, and I, yeah, so anyways, we'll get that taken care of, and then I've got to send appointment, reappointment memos up to reposition any board members moving from one, one seat to another. So, yeah, so just, just some stuff behind the scenes, but we'll get that done.
Excellent.
And, yep.
Thank you.
I kept the map off of here. Excellent. So I guess that means we are adjourned, and with hopefully as minimal talking over one another as possible tonight. Thanks, Alan.
My husband's not going to be happy. Harrington will hear it. I'm serious. I've been married since 19. Yes.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know that.
You didn't know that? Yes.
Okay, so we got to get you a new.
Hi, I'm Warren, man.
And what, I'm sorry.
Harrington will hear it. I'll send it to you.
Yeah, okay, send it to me, yeah. If you want a copy of the show.
You're going to go all this trouble, make sure you spell it right.
I had, like, a little fan, and she was fanning herself.
So.
Well, we were at Warner to see some shirts.
All right, all right.
Fanning herself.
It's hard to keep up with things.